Our first order of business invocation Pastor Rob Whitner, Generation Church. Pastor, you here? Come up please, sir. If you would, please stand.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Thank you for going this.
Yes, sir. Glad to be here. Let us operate. Our Father, I thank you for this opportunity to come and open this meeting with prayer, and I thank you for counsel, Lord, that is willing to acknowledge you. And so, Lord, since we are acknowledging you, you have declared that you will direct our paths. So, God, I ask you that you direct our paths concerning fiscal responsibility and oversight. Direct our paths, Lord, concerning community development and revitalization. Direct our paths, Lord, concerning life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And, God, we thank you for it all and give you all the praise, glory, and the honor. And I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, Pastor.
Thank you, sir.
Do the closing with quick. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its cause.
We have roll call?
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
We're all here. Approval of the minutes of May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, and May thirty-one, two thousand eighteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor raise right hand. opposed the same. Minutes carry. Presentation is our first presentation is appreciation for service rendered by Bruce Carnegie as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than twenty-nine years. So, Bruce, I'm gonna read this resolution, and then I'm gonna call you up and give you your plaque. Resolution, special appreciation for service rendered by Bruce Carnegie as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than twenty-nine years. Bruce Carnegie requires retires on August first, two thousand eighteen, as an equipment operator with the public works department of the city of Goldsboro for more than twenty-nine years of service. Bruce began his career on August second, nineteen eighty-nine, as Labor One with the Public Works Department. On July eighth, nineteen ninety-two, Bruce was promoted to equipment operator with the Public Works Department, where he has served until his retirement. Bruce has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, of expressing to Bruce Carnegie their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over these years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro North Carolina that, number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during Bruce's tenure with the city of Goldsboro. Two, we offer Bruce our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. And three, this resolution shall be incorporated into official minutes at the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect from this and after the sixteenth day of July, two thousand eighteen. Offer this for adoption.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor raise right hand. opposed likewise. The resolution carries. Bruce?
You sure? You got one more picture?
Okay. Sorry.
You have anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I'd like to say I get honored to see the city of Goldsboro allow me to work in peace through the years. Appreciate the opportunity to stay in the city of Goldsboro.
Well, we're gonna miss you, and we wish you the best in your future.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We have another resolution for another retirement. This is resolution expressing appreciation for service rendered by Willette Davis as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than twenty-two years. Willette Davis replies retires on August one, two thousand eighteen, as a police crime analyst with the Goldsboro Police Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than twenty-two years of service. Willette began her career on August sixteenth, nineteen ninety-five, as a police crime analyst with the Goldsboro Fire Department, where she has served until her retirement. Willette has proven herself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who gained the admiration and respect of her fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, of expressing to Willette Davis their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by her to the city over these years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro North Carolina that, number one, we express to Willette our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during Bruce's tenure with the city of Goldsboro. Two, we offer Bruce our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in her future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into official minutes at the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect from and after this, the sixteenth day of July, two thousand eighteen. Offer this for adoption.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor raise right hand. opposed likewise. This resolution also passed. Willette?
I don't know who they're gonna find to put all these numbers together anymore. I know she's been with us a long time, and being pretty darn accurate at it. I know that guy represents me very, very, let's say, by the book, and very straight and narrow, you know, his life.
I didn't. I've been awful. For other third three, but the last one three, that's my best, my fault. So, I'm thankful that you're at all this time.
I'll see Chief, Wes, and Pennsylvania. I think y'all standing to say something?
Captain Stein is a direct supervisor for Willette. In the twenty-two years that I've known her, I'll be honest with you, I haven't really had a lot of interaction with her. I knew she came to work when she was supposed to. She did her job. She was kind of quiet. She was there, but she didn't. She didn't very thorough, and I appreciate that. It's a well-deserved retirement. We're gonna miss you. We're gonna try to fill your position with someone of your quality, but it's gonna be tough. I want a graduation, wishing you the best of luck. Captain Stein, he's the one that did the day-to-day.
To kind of echo what the chief said, Willette, if we had ten more like her, we'd be dangerous. It was one of those things where if you ever asked Willette for something, it was never... it was always she got it done right away, and it was never something that she couldn't get you. If she couldn't get it right away, she wouldn't find a way to get it to you. You'd never know she was there unless her light was on. She was always very quiet. She went about her business. Never really caused any problems. I wish I had, like I said, ten more like her, and she will be sorely missed. There is gonna be a definite void when she leaves on first of August. Well, tomorrow's her last working day, but she's gonna be sorely missed. I wish her all the best in her retirement, and health, and happiness, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Well, let me get a picture of the guy on the right. Y'all come up here. I'm looking at him a little bit.
Y'all want me to do something? No, you're good, okay?
I'll be one of those. I'm gonna put it back. Let me get a couple of them. Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is gonna be a Gold Star Award. Bernie?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
The purpose of the Gold Star Award is to recognize city employees for their contributions to the city of Goldsboro. Its primary aim is to award employees for going above and beyond the normal scope of job duties, as well as promoting the organization's values and beliefs of integrity, professionalism, collaboration, and quality of life. The star evaluation should specifically focus on job-related outputs and/or accomplishments in customer service, professionalism, problem-solving, quality improvement, teamwork, and community partnership. This evening, we have five awards, and at this time, I would like for the nominees to come forward to present the June two thousand eighteen star award. And we're gonna start with the police department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I nominated Officer Joseph Leg. He's one of the officers on my shift. And I actually had a partner in crime, so to speak, for this nomination.
Mr. Bass, could you please step up here with me?
Mr. Bass actually held nomination letter for Officer Leg. And I'm gonna read some parts of his letter to explain why he was nominated. Mr. Bass wrote, "He has always had a tremendous support and faith in the Goldsboro Police Department. One holiday, a wonderful policeman actually rescued him and went far beyond his responsibilities to further his support for our local PD." His name was Officer Joseph Leg. While preparing for Christmas festivities with my brother, father, and family, I had the unfortunate opportunity to have severe heart seizure while showering. I fell in the shower, passed out, and was trapped in the bathroom. My father, who was disabled after not hearing from me for a while, called nine-one-one. Police crashed through the locked door, found me on the floor of the shower, called for rescue, and he was sent to the hospital because of the emergency of his health. Seizures leave no memories for him, and he had no recollection of what happened until he was told by his doctor later that day. My minister came both days, but that was my only visitor. Of course, family and friends who were involved in church and celebrations because of Christmas, which is where he wanted to be. I was pretty sad to spend my favorite holiday in the hospital. On Christmas Day, I got a knock at the door. I actually got a second visitor, a Goldsboro policeman. I panicked, thinking, "What did I do yesterday that I don't remember?" The Goldsboro policeman was Joseph Leg. He had been one of my rescuers and told me how I was found and how I was rescued. He was concerned enough to visit and see how I was doing with a card and a candy cane. I have to say that I was so moved, I began to cry. I was so thankful. What a wonderful gift on this holiday. Joseph Leg's visit was a story I've shared many, many times. My church has a member devotional every Advent season. He wrote a devotional called "The Symbols of Christmas," and it was about the candy cane. I will never forget such a memorable Christmas visit as from Joseph Leg. It was an extremely kind and generous policeman who was kind of like an angel for me. And that was why he nominated, helped me nominate Officer Leg for the Gold Star Award. Sometimes, we don't realize the simple, kind gestures that we can do that really do touch an individual's heart. So, that's why he was nominated.
Bob, do you want to say anything? I've never seen you get a lost word.
I think the letter pretty much said it, but it is an inspiration that most of my friends knew this story because I've shared it with some of them, and my great supporter of the Goldsboro Police Department. And thank you, Officer Leg. You're like an angel on Christmas Day.
Okay, Officer Leg, you can't just sit there. You gotta come here and be a part of it. Bobby, you play right there. I want you to have some fun.
He's down there. He's three of them.
Bernie, you can play right there. Bobby, you play right there. I want you to have some fun. Bernie, you can play right there. Bobby, you 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 play right there.
I think the letter pretty much said it, but it is an inspiration that most of my friends knew this story because I've shared it with some of them, and my great supporter of the Goldsboro Police Department. And thank you, Officer Leg. You're like an angel on Christmas Day.
Okay, Officer Leg, you can't just sit there. You gotta come here and be a part of it. Bobby, you play right there. I want you to have some fun. Bernie, you got another one?
Good evening. Good evening, sir.
Well, while replacing a hundred-and-forty-foot section of a sidewalk along Mulberry Street, these three employees came up with an idea to volunteer to work on a Sunday. This was done because a small portion of the sidewalk being replaced was directly in front of the Mulberry Street Marketplace store. As not to negatively affect the store, the small business owner's commerce, this team removed the existing walkway and laid the framework for pouring the concrete during the store's scheduled closing days, Sunday and Monday. This group of employees came up with a plan and implemented it, so the business owner did not have to close down, lose time, or money during the reconstruction phase. When we have employees who put the citizens and business owners first, I think it shows how much we care about our community. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Eddie Moses, Haki Corbett, and Daniel Butler.
If you want to let y'all know, I can vouch that this really didn't happen, because I was up here on Sunday, and I walked up to the mayor, I left, I saw the city truck go there, and I'm like, "Well, let's have something pretty major on, that they're out there working on Sunday like this." It's about a million degrees out there, and I went out there in these streets, you know, working their tails off, getting that saw off one of the other, doing a great job. So, I do very much appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
And let's see. Daniel? Oh, I don't know what I have to say. That's it. Who's this?
That's Dan.
Oh, who's the back there? I'm gonna give you a check. No, Kay's not gonna give you.
Come on. All right, so next, our next presentation is Keys to Healing: Hug and Love Key. Mr. Bill Sutton? Ms. Sutton?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Councilman.
Good evening.
I want to thank you to the Councilmen and other city officials for this opportunity to address you this evening. I would also like to express my appreciation to Ms. Getz for your patience while I navigated through the email process with my limited internet skills. I don't think you'll hurt. Thank you very much. My name is Bill Sutton, and I am the founder of the nonprofit organization Keys to Healing, Inc., where our overall mission is to create a path towards peace and unity. I am also author of a manuscript entitled Keys to Healing. We are actively promoting through the organization the Hug and Love Key, which is the daily act of a parent, legal guardian, or caregiver of a child to give that child a hug, then look directly into their eyes while saying, "I love you." Pretty simplistic. This will help to strengthen and secure the bond between parents and their children. In securing that bond between a parent and child, especially the biological mother, this community amid other communities will see a decrease in senseless violent acts, bullying, school shootings, serial killings, and a host of other antisocial behaviors. These are the likely consequences when children do not develop a secure bond with their parent or their caregivers. Because, according to Dr. David A. Kershaw, securely attached babies feel assured by their mother's feelings. When they are upset, she is a source of comfort. Insecurely attached babies seek the same comfort, but they are less assured by their mother's presence. The quality of attachment profoundly affects later development. There was also a study done by the Institute of Child Development at the University of Minnesota that involved children who lived in unstable environments. However, those with secure mother-infant attachments were more likely to be self-reliant, have lower rates of mental disorders, do well in school, especially in math, have good peer relationships. These differences were found to continue into adolescence. All this information and other information you can find on the Keys to Healing website, and that is www.kistohill.org. Let me just add here that part of the motivation for the creation of the Hug and Love Key was born out of my attempt at personal redemption. As a youth, I was filled with the same rage and anger that's fueling some of today's negative actions by our young people. It was witnessing the self-destruction all around me that spurred my in-depth and painful self-analysis, and ultimately, me changing my life's course. During this analytical phase of my life, I realized that a childhood with no expression of love or affection... let me just repeat that. I realized that a childhood with no expression of love or affection, how that played into my antisocial behaviors. The negative behavior patterns of adults who have been affected by inadequate or no nurturing or affection during their upbringing crosses all ethnic boundaries. There's a common thread that connects the negative actions of today's so-called street thugs who are wrecking communities throughout America with senseless violent acts and other acts of mayhem with people, mostly men, who have committed serial killings, school shootings, and other acts of terror, hate, or rape. The link connecting these antisocial behaviors is that the perpetrators of these kinds of conduct never securely bonded with a parent or guardian during their upbringing. Charles Manson, a nineteen-sixties cult leader, sent his followers on a murderous rampage in California that includes the brutal murder of Hollywood actress Sharon Tate. Timothy McVeigh detonated a bomb in nineteen ninety-five at a federal building in Oklahoma that killed a hundred and sixty-eight people, innocent people, including babies and children. LaShawn Martin, in twenty thirteen, spewed his hatred of Caucasian people, just before sucker punching three random adults on the streets of New York City, where one man died from his injuries related to that assault. These men, all convicted of these atrocious crimes, received inadequate nurturing and affection from their parents and or guardians as it relates in their biographies. Could these tragic incidents have been avoided if these men had securely bonded with their parents by receiving proper nurturing and affection? Anyone may argue that point, but the information that is available today supports the idea that children who grow up feeling secure in the love between them and their parents or caregivers are more likely to develop positive attitudes and become productive citizens as adults. We have pledged eighty-eight families, pledging to incorporate the Hug and Love into their daily lives, right here in Wayne County. Thanks to Pinky, some people know Ezra Butler Jacobs, but she is our community liaison, and she's responsible for a lot of these signings. And so, I personally want to thank her right now, in front of you. We know these families, again, we know these families love their children. That's not the issue. We just asked them to pledge to incorporate the Hug and Love Key daily into their lives, and hopefully, it would encourage others, the family members, and other people around there, so that we can keep the process going to promote change. We will be doing a door-to-door campaign to seek families to pledge to Hug and Love Key. We will also continue doing public forums and campaigns to tell people about the importance of pledging to Hug and Love Key. We plan to visit the incarcerated and get the message into the prison systems in hopes of helping with the problem of recidivism. We need support from the city for this innovative approach to solving critical problems, to solve a critical problem. We believe that the Hug and Love Key can and will benefit all communities. But us as a partner with the city of Goldsboro will be seen as a progressive for us and this city. I don't have to tell this council the benefits of being a progressive and innovative city. I believe that you're really out, that you're already out, but helping us to put this out there, helping us to promote this, I think would just add to that. Keys to Healing not only need monetary resources, but resources in other areas. But first, we need to get all the council members, if they will, to pledge, pledge to incorporate the Hug and Love Key into your daily lives. If you have children, grandchildren, and help us pass the word around. We plan to market this. One of the models we want to use to market the Hug and Love Key is based on the anti-smoking campaign, based on the anti-smoking campaign's history. In the early nineteen fifty's, fifty out of every one hundred adults, that's eighteen and over, were smokers. I know this is smoking, North Carolina was a big smoking capital, but they did research, and they found out the harmful effects of smoking cigarettes, lung cancer, heart disease, and all those other things that happen to you when you smoke cigarettes. And then, a campaign was started in the middle of fifty's to give people the information about the dangers of that kind of behavior. And that campaign has lasted up until now. Now, we have fifteen out of every one hundred Americans that smoke. So, that's quite a reduction, and quite a few lives that's been saved. The reason that that campaign was successful is because people kept pushing that message out there. Our campaign to give people information about the dangers of not bonding securely with their children is just as important, because it will save lives. Again, people that don't perceive that exhibit antisocial behaviors. They commit these hate-us acts that we read about every day. I mean, if you check the backgrounds on them, you'll find that they were missing that one ingredient, that parental bonding that we all need. Just as smoking was a danger to society, again, I'll say it again, not securing a bond now in two thousand eighteen is just as much a danger as smoking was in the nineteen fifty's. I am here tonight to say, yes, we as adults are personally responsible for our actions. I know people like to say that, and it's true. But if we ignore the critical importance of parent-child bonding to a productive, safe, and vibrant community, then we do so at the peril of our own community. And I think, I just want to say, I've spoken briefly with the mayor, Councilman Williams, and Councilman Foster about Keys to Healing, and I'm actually looking forward to having a conversation with other council members about this important issue. I'm always available for questions and comments, or any kind of input that you want to give me concerning this matter. I'm always available to listen. Again, thank you, Councilman, for this opportunity, and thank you to the rest of the city officials.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Please take it.
Mr. Sutton, thank you for what you're doing. We really appreciate it.
Very important to our community. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Next, we're gonna start our public hearings. Item F, Z-ten-eighteen Lane Farms Incorporated. The property is located on the southwest corner of Salem Church Road and US seventy Bypass. The applicant is requesting a zoning change from R sixteen residential to highway business. There's five hundred foot of frontage along Salem Church Road and two thousand four hundred feet along US seventy bypass. The area is approximately twenty-two acres. Surrounding zoning to the north, you have R twenty and general business, and to the south, east, and west, you have R sixteen residential. A portion of the property is occupied by Lane Tree Conference Center and an area just north of Titleist Drive, which is vacant. A conditional district has not been requested, however, the existing conference center would be a permitted use in highway business.
And I think, um, I just want to say, I've spoken briefly with the mayor, uh, Councilman Williams and Councilman Foster about Keys to Healing, and I'm actually looking forward to, uh, having a conversation with other council members about this important issue. I'm always available, uh, for questions and comments, or any kind of input that you want to give me concerning this matter, I'm always available to listen. Again, thank you, Councilman, for this opportunity, and thank you to the rest of the city officials.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
Thank you for what you're doing, we really appreciate it.
Very important to our community. Thank you.
Next, we're gonna start our public hearings, item F, Z-1018 Lane Farms, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item F is Z-1018 Lane Farms Incorporated. The property is located on the southwest corner of Salem Church Road and US-70 bypass. The applicant is requesting a zoning change from R-16 residential to highway business. There's 500 foot of frontage along Salem Church Road and 2,400 feet along US-70 bypass. The area is approximately 22 acres. Surrounding zoning to the north, you have R-20 and general business, and to the south, east, and west, you have R-16 residential. A portion of the property is occupied by Lane Tree Conference Center and an area just north of Titleist Drive which is vacant. A conditional district has not been requested, however, the existing conference center would be a permitted use in highway business. The city's adopted land use plan designates this property for industrial use north of Titleist Drive and office and institutional for the conference center. Industrial uses are also recommended to the east and to the north across US-70 bypass. City water is available to serve the property, and the developer can extend sewer services to the subject site. The applicant has indicated his desire to develop a portion of the property just north of Titleist Drive for patio homes in the future, which would permit, which would be permitted in the proposed highway business zone. The property north of Titleist Drive is located just outside the city limits, but is within the city's ETJ. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on August 6. Here are specifics of the subject property. This is from Salem Church Road. This is from Titleist Drive. And this is a view from US-70 bypass. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing for Lane Farms requesting a zone change from R-16 residential to highway business. Would anybody like to speak? Would anybody like to speak? Seeing that one, we're gonna close this public hearing and move on. Okay, we'll move to the next, Jennifer.
Item G is CU-618 Glenn Price. The property is located on the west side of Miller's Chapel Road between US-70 East and Wilson Street. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a contractor's office with outdoor storage in the Airport Business One zoning district. The property is located within the accident potential zone one in 7579 Decville Noise Overlay District for Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. Previously, the property operated as a producer of rubber stamps. It has been more than six months since the facility was last operated, and therefore, a conditional use permit is now required. City water and sewer are not available to the property. The submitted site plan shows that the property contains an existing single-story building with a 950-square-foot office area at the front and a 3,000-square-foot storage area at the rear, which includes two vehicle bays. Here's a picture of the existing building. The area behind the office is fenced in and is proposed for storage of the applicant's business vehi, equipment. The applicant will be required to screen outdoor storage for off-site views. According to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, the subject property's proposed use is compatible as long as the measures to achieve a noise level reduction of 30 decibels will be incorporated into the design and construction of portions of the building where the public is received. In addition, the subject property is located within the APZ One, and the occupancy of the property will be limited to 26 people. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council at your meeting on August 6. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. This is a conditional use permit to allow operators of a contractor's office with outdoor storage in the Airport Business One zoning district. Is there anybody who wants to speak? Anybody wants to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you will, sir, she's gonna have to square you in. If you'll come up and see her, then you can speak. Anybody else want to speak? Okay.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council. I am Glenn Price, I'm the one requesting this. Just would like to your approval on this, uh, to, let's revitalize this building that hasn't been used. As you can see, it definitely needs the uplift. As far as outside stories, there will be very little outside stories we're talking about. Maybe a couple of trailers, be kind of out of the way we use for, got a couple of dug trailers. That will be mainly the only thing that is outside, everything else will be stored inside. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna close this public hearing and move to the next.
Item H is CU-718 Jay Patel. The property is located on the west side of Parkway Drive between Berkeley Boulevard and North Park Drive. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to operate an internet cafe, electronic gaming facility within one unit in a strip shopping center. The property is on general business. Within the general business zoning classification, internet cafes with no ABC permits are permitted use only after the issuance of a conditional use permit approved by city council. In May of 2017, the council adopted an ordinance rewriting its regulations as they pertain to internet cafes and electronic gaming operations. The new ordinance now allows these uses only within the general business zoning district, and in addition, distance, uh, were established between internet cafes and other uses. 500 feet from residentially zoned or developed property, church, school, daycare, playground, or public park, and one mile from another internet cafe. The new ordinance also reduced the parking requirements for internet cafes to one and a half space per computer and one space per employee. The subject site meets all of the distance requirements with the exception of the distance between such facilities. There's an existing internet cafe in the Pinewood Shopping Center that is approximately 4,842 feet away from the applicant's site. A modification of the one-mile distance will be required from 5,280 feet to 4,842 feet. Hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and noon to 6:00 PM on Saturday. Number of employees would be two, and number of computers would be 25. Based on the number of computers, the use would require 40 parking spaces. There are 44 marked parking spaces serving the entire strip center, which contains four individual businesses. There is an additional paved area on the lot that is not striped, but which would provide up to 20 parking spaces. The applicant contends that the majority of his business will be after 5:00 PM, when at least, uh, one other business in the center is closed. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for the council at your meeting on August the 6th. And here is an elevation of the shopping center.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Jennifer, how long ago was that, that we, um, we changed the ordinance, um, when it came to, um, space from one internet cafe to the other? Was that about a year and a half ago?
It was in May of 2017.
It was in May. I'm concerned about the space and just another internet cafe being in, in the city. I don't, you know, with, with all the people here that are going through challenges financially, I don't think we need another internet cafe that's gonna take someone's money away.
Is the Armed Forces Recruiting Center still in that?
Yes, it is.
Yes, sir.
Is it in, in that complex? Okay.
It's, it's not a good situation.
Any more questions? Thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing, conditional use permit to operate an internet cafe, gaming facility with one unit and a strip shopping center. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody want to speak? Seeing no one getting up, we're gonna close this public hearing and move to the next. Which the next is, we're gonna excuse the planning commission. Thank y'all for coming and look forward to y'all's recommendations. All right, so now we're gonna move to, with the planning commission excused, we're gonna move to the public comment period. Did I miss, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, KK, how could I forget you? All right, we're gonna move to public here to consider the financing of the Central Police and Fire Department expansion, Kay. Sorry about that.
Yeah, item, uh, is the public hearing to consider the financing for the Central Police and Fire Department expansion and renovations to Fire Station Number Four. Under Section 168-20, the city must hold, hold a public hearing on installment financing before entering into a contract. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Goldsboro News/August on July 6. The city of Goldsboro plans to construct a state-of-the-art 8,000-square-foot expansion for police evidence and construct a 3,500-square-foot dormitory building at Fire Station Number Four. The city is soliciting bids for installment financing for these projects with an amount not to exceed 5.3 million. No action is required after the public hearing tonight. At the next meeting, staff will have a recommendation for bank financing along with the resolution authorizing the filing of the application with the local government commission.
Any questions? This is a public hearing to consider the financing of the Central Police and Fire Department expansion and renovations to Fire Station Four. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? All right, we're gonna close this public hearing and move to the next, which is the item J.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
Item J is the public hearing for the recommended 2018, 2019 annual action plan to allow the citizens of Goldsboro the opportunity to discuss and express their concerns regarding housing and non-housing needs that exist as they relate to the 2018, 2019 annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program. The FY Federal appropriation process extended through May of 2018, and the city was notified of final allocation on May 16, 2018. Grantees receiving annual, excuse me, annual allocations of CDVG and home funds are statutory required to submit grant agreements, annual action plans by August 16, regardless of delays in the federal budget. A 30-day comment period began on July 6, 2018, and will end August 6, 2018. A public hearing must be held during this public comment period. Comments received at this public hearing and the public meeting scheduled for July 27, 2018 will be incorporated into the, as part of the 2018, uh, 19 annual action plan. All advertisements have and will be published in the Goldsboro News/August relatively to, excuse me, prior to the holding of a public hearing, public meeting, and 30-day review. The 2018, 2019 annual action plan identified activities to be funded with the city's FY CDVG and home funding allocation. Fiscal year 2018 funding allocation include 339,000, 300 and 30, excuse me, $36 for CDVG, 228,922 dollars for home funds. In addition, the city will have available approximately 23,511 dollars in prior year CDVG funds and 118,697 dollars in prior year home funds as of the July 30 of 2018 balance. It is staff recommendation by motion following the first public hearing on July 16, 2018 for council to continue acceptance of citizen comments and participation for the 2018, 2019 annual action plan to be incorporated into final submission to HUD and to approve the adoption of the city of Goldsboro 2018, 2019 annual action plan after the second public meeting scheduled for July 27, and at the end of the 30-day, 30-day comment period scheduled to end August 6, 2018, and authorize the mayor and staff to execute and file the annual action plan along with the required certificates SF-424 and grant agreements that are required to receive CDVG home funds for and on behalf of the city of Goldsboro to make minor changes to those documents where necessary. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Chaco.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing as it relates to 2018, 2019 annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Program. Would anybody like to speak? Would anybody like to speak? All right, we're gonna close this public hearing, and you have a recommendation that includes the following: continue acceptance of citizen comments and participation for 2018, 19 plan, incorporate the final mission to HUD, approve the adoption of the city of Goldsboro 2018 annual action plan after the second public scheduled meeting on July 27, 2018, and at the end of the 30-day comment period, which is August 6, 2018, and also others in mayor's staff to execute to file the annual action plan along with the SF-424 grant agreements. Is there a motion?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All others, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Motion carries. All right, so we're done with that.
Thank you, Chaco. Wherever she went. Thank you, Chaco.
All right, so now we're gonna go to our public comment period time. So anybody from the audience has up to three minutes to come speak on anything relating to the city, if you would like to speak. Is there anybody from the audience? Ms. Jacobs.
How are you doing?
How are you?
I've got some papers for you again, I'd like to give me your homework.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm coming before you today because I'm so thankful and grateful to be a part of the Historic Board, um, the Historic Commission, something I was very excited about. Um, upon our third meeting, the first paper you have is an email from Ms. Alicia Pierce. She's a member of the Historic Board. Um, we had an amendment, and it was a discussion, no one made a motion. It was just a discussion. But it said, Ms. Jennifer, I would like to add an agenda to our next meeting stated as follows pending legal review. Discussion to amend Section 3 of the bylaws to state members of the Historic District Commission must reside in or own property within the Historic District. Never feasible, membership of the Historic District Commission shall be composed of a majority of members having special training, experience, or interest in such fields as history or architecture. Hurt, very hurt that the thought even was coming from our chairman of the Historic Commission to, I would say, close in the commission like that. I also have attached an email, Ms. Alicia Pierce, so I'm a member of the Historic District Commission. I would like to thank you for your recent appointment to the commission. As an educator and veteran, I feel it's important to ensure that we maintain our historical perspective while focusing on the future of our community. I've had the pleasure of attending three of the HTC meetings and feel that I added value to the commission. I'm writing in to voice my concerns about the chairman of the commission, Mr. Zach Lilly. He is not displaying qualities of a great leader. He is trying to create unnecessary division. On June 8, Mr. Lilly sent the following email. Upon receiving the email, I was slightly disappointed because I felt it was initially a personal attack. I had just shared with the commission members I had recently purchased a home that I was renovating. I share the address and location of the home, which the commission members knew as well. The property is not in the Historic District. So after reflecting on the situation, I decided to wait to speak with Mr. Lilly in person to gain understanding of his motives. And speaking with him on the July 10 meeting in the HTC, he said in, his intent to amend the request was because he did not have voting privileges in Wake County as a Wayne County resident. I mentioned to him that his motives seemed discriminating, and he said with great boldness, I am being discriminating. And I tried to get him to see that the Historic District of Goldsboro is not a separate entity from the city. Another one from Mr. Joshua, who was also on the board, said, speaking on behalf of the individuals that are interested in the growth of Goldsboro, the Historical District plays an important part in the identity and the character of the city. Even though I do not own property in the Historic District, I, as well as others, may still like to participate in the committee to bring a diversification of ideals while maintaining the integrity of the regulations. As most notable districts move, so does the city, so I see this as an excellent opportunity to aid in positive development and growing the brand of Goldsboro. To some degree, there is special interest in continued participating in this committee. So I would be against limiting the members to property owners in the Historic District. A lot of our Historic District members, um, are realtors. So it does deem a problem, um, when everything is about buying and selling property and wanting to close it off to only people who own property, which would be almost a homeowners association. We've also attached the Historic Commission's General Statute that states that anyone on any type of boards and commission must be in the territorial district of the whole city, not a specified group. So, for us, as we've already stated before, the boards and commissions and rules and regulations, these boards and commissions make a lot of vital decisions for our city. And reviewing this and being a part of one now, and reading the general laws and statutes, I'm seeing things are not really operating properly as they should. I believe we'd like to call for investigation on the boards and their purposes and priorities, because I'm even looking in the 2006 purposes of the Historic Board, there's supposed to be education going on. I'm looking at the new, um, appropriations for the Historic Board. There's no education up there, it's all about buying and selling properties. So when you have a group of realtors on the board, and all they're doing is talking about buying and selling properties, and now have no longer further talking about the integrity or the education of the Historic Board, it's deeming a problem, and what is the purpose of this board? Is it becoming a special interest board for people of the city to become a part of? And just to mention, once again, going back to the laws, if people on the boards knew the law, they would've never even brought this up, to waste a whole meeting to talk about something that legally cannot even happen. I read this statute, so, thank you for letting me talk longer than my three minutes, but...
That's fine, you're good, but I think two things. First off, I guess this is his recommendation. I don't think this council has any interest in changing the bylaws of the Historic District, so I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, well, I, I'm sorry, I'm in interrupting.
No, that's not, and I think, secondly, what we might need to do is go back and define what the intent is of the Historic District, and what, what we expect for that board, and I think we are glad to do that.
Yeah.
And maybe that will help that question.
Yeah, and we have a couple of more emails and suggestions of a few more things, 'cause three minutes does not deem enough time to really put it in perspective.
Send this email to us.
Yeah, and we would love to do that, because the boards, like you said, are very important, and we need the high, we need the diversification to actually make the city what it's supposed to be. And I just read the William Street School closing, and one of the things that one of the... And I just read the William Street school closing and one of the things that one of the guys said, he said that this closing of this school and maintaining the history of Goldsboro gives us a standard to work off of. And when you look in our city, a lot of our black history is not seen in the city. So therefore, there's not a standard for a lot of the young men who we're complaining about don't have an identity. If the historic board used their purposes, we could use that to bring about some changes, showing them love, showing them that they have a history here, so they have something to work towards. Just like a lot of the other people in our city, it's all ushered in, Boardman Parker, his father, his grandfather. A lot of you on this board, your grandfathers, your people came through here and you knew it and that's what gave you the motivation to go further and fight for the city. So we want to use this board as an opportunity to grow the city and not continue to discriminate and close our city in. And just on a side note, our city manager wasn't opposed to this being done. He wasn't opposed at all. So that's another thing, because he should know the law. He should not even told this Ms. Jennifer that he was not even opposition to it. So it's questions in the quality of our leaders and that's the biggest issue that we have.
You can send us an email with your-
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak from the public? Anybody else? Alright, we're gonna clo- is he coming, you coming to speak or you tired of us and you leaving? Alright, so we're gonna close the public comment period and we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, your consent agenda items that you had discussed earlier consist of items K through item S. Again, items K through item S.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, item K through item S.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Your pro-.
Yes.
Councilor Lavius.
Yes.
Councilor Broadway. Mayor Stevens.
Yes.
Councilor Mollster.
Yes.
Councilor Gray.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. Our next is item requiring individual actions of right-of-way reimbursement for Central Heights. Jennifer, you go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and council. Item T is the right-of-way reimbursement for Central Heights realignment known as Project U fifty-seven twenty-four. Uh, this is a funded transportation highway project with right-of-way currently in progress and construction scheduled for FY twenty nineteen. The project will include the extension of Fallon Boulevard at Berkeley Boulevard to Central Heights Road and the realignment and extension of Oak Forest Road over the railroad to Central Heights Road. In order to include the realignment and extension of Oak Forest Road over the railroad to Central Heights Road within the project scope, an agreement between NC DOT and the city has been prepared. The agreement indicates that the city of Goldsboro agrees to participate in the right-of-way cost and NC DOT is responsible for acquiring the needed right-of-way for the extension of Oak Forest Road. NC DOT sees the value in the extension at the city's request and agrees to assist the city in acquiring the right-of-way and construction of the extension. The city shall participate in the actual project right-of-way cost up to a maximum amount of five hundred thousand in three installments over three years. The city shall make payments in three installments and upon execution of this agreement by the city, the city shall submit the first installment of a hundred and twenty-five thousand to NC DOT. NC DOT shall invoice the city for the second installment as well as the third installment. Um, both of those installments are a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars and would be due at July one of twenty nineteen with the third installment due July one of twenty twenty. It is recommended by motion, adopt the attached resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for right-of-way reimbursement up to a maximum amount of five hundred thousand for Project U fifty-seven twenty-four and adopt the attached ordinance appropriating the unassigned fund balance of the general fund in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the first installment.
Any questions for Jennifer?
I make a motion that we, uh, adopt the right-of-way reimbursement for Central Heights realignment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All others favor raise right hand. Opposed likewise. Motion carries. Alright, we have, uh, one of the city manager report, which city manager?
Mayor and council, a couple of things this evening. Chief Dixon, would you come up and stand at the podium so I can at least introduce you and say a few words about you?
Sure, sure.
Um, your mayor and council, good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce, uh, Joe Dixon as the new fire chief for the city of Goldsboro, replacing Chief Gary Weather who retired last November. Uh, you know, I officially made this announcement in early April, but we didn't swear him in until July second, uh, of this, so he's been here a couple of weeks now. Uh, I'm always looking for the best candidate to fill any job opening with the city and I believe Chief Dixon will be an excellent fit. He served twenty-five years with the Howard County, Maryland Department of Fire and Rescue Services in various capacities, most recently as assistant fire chief. He holds a BS degree in fire service from the University of Maryland, University College, and a master's degree in organizational leadership from Waldorf College. He has an extensive list of specialized programs that he has completed, senior level experiences, numerous awards and accomplishments, and is actively involved in professional associations related to the fire service. In talking with his references, it is clear that he has made a lasting impression on those that work with him and has done a great job preparing himself for the position as fire chief with the city of Goldsboro. Chief Dixon impressed me and our group of assessors with his calm demeanor, knowledge of the department and community before he had even arrived, his competitive spirit, and the facts that he likes to use data to make informed decisions. Chief, you really are coming to a department that is committed to the city and willing to take direction on how, on how to best serve its citizens. I do feel fortunate to have found someone with your background, enthusiasm, and work ethic to lead our fire department. And as I hope you're continuing to find out, Goldsboro is a great community and I'm sure you will have many people willing to help you serve the city. So I would like to say congratulations, welcome you to the city chief. And if you, um, want to say a few words, I would certainly open that up to you as well.
Well, as I told you before, thank you again, I'm Mr. City Manager. I'm to the mayor, the council. Um, I've never had a loss of words to promote Goldsboro Fire Department and the city of Goldsboro. Um, it's certainly been very welcoming, um, to some of the citizens that I've met, um, during my time here. I'm visiting churches, um, and you know, the community has just been great. And, uh, working with the department, uh, you know, we, we've already looked toward some cost-saving measures and I, I believe the time here will be, you know, it was a great choice and we will be looking forward to do great things in the city of Goldsboro. So thank you very much for your trust, your faith, and you know, certainly make sure you feel like you made a good decision. Thanks.
Thank you, chief.
And chief, we really welcome you and glad to see you made it the first two weeks. That's really important. You're still with us.
Mayor and council, I have one other introduction this evening. Uh, if I could ask Latoya to come up to the podium. Just happens to be timing on filling a couple of positions that we've had vacant for a while. I would like to introduce Latoya McHenry as our new public information officer for the city. Uh, this position was created by you last December. And as I stated in my earlier comments, I'm always looking for the best candidate to fill any job opening and Latoya certainly fits that bill as well. She has over sixteen years of experience, most, most recently as public information specialist with the city of Norfolk's Department of Utilities. There she coordinated public relations planning and execution of a wide variety of information and outreach initiatives. She also worked as a public affairs specialist with the city of Durham where she managed social media and the public affairs office and coordinated public relations for the Department of Water Management. She began her career as a newspaper reporter, uh, including a brief stint at the Free Press in Kinston. She grew up in Goldsboro, graduated from Eastern Wayne, which I'm already finding a little rivalry there somewhere in the community, and has a bachelor's degree in communication from Peace College. And I feel very fortunate to have found someone with Latoya's communication skills and background of working with a large public utility in a North Carolina city as our public information officer. She has a good understanding of municipal operations and I believe she will help the city better engage the community. During her first week here, she has definitely hit the ground running with more to come. She's been working for us, as like I said, for a week and thus far still has a smile on her face, at least most of the day. And at this time, I would like to say congratulations and welcome Latoya. I do look forward to working with her and would offer her the opportunity to say a word to Latoya.
Say, good evening, mayor and council, and I just would like to say that I'm excited to be back home in Goldsboro and I look forward to telling our Goldsboro story, the wonderful things that we have going on here. I look forward to working further with all of you.
We welcome you and we look forward to you telling our story and we're glad you made it after a week too, so that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, one other item I would like to share. We did send out a note this week that we did receive word from S and P that our bond rating went up from an A, or double A minus to a double A, which is a good trend. It really is to your leadership and making good decisions for the city. And I do want to say thank you to Kay Scott and her staff for really presenting good information to me and to you and so you can make those good decisions for us. Moody's did hold our ratings as stable, so it stayed the same. But we were very pleased with the upgrade in our rating, which does lead to lower borrowing costs for our community. So just wanted to say congratulations to all of them and that as well. And that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Well, we also want to say our appreciation to you and the finance department and everybody who participated in that because I know part of that is numbers, part of that is presentation and, and what, how they lead when they feel here and, and get through those calls. So that is really good that, that we're moving in the right direction and a very positive direction there. So we do thank everybody involved with that. Um, next we have a resolution expressing appreciation for service rendered by Barry Driscoll as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than twelve years. I'm gonna read that real quick. Barry Driscoll retires on August one, two thousand eighteen as chief treat- chief treatment plant operator at the water plant and the public utilities department at the city of Goldsboro with more than ten years of service. Barry began his career with the city of Goldsboro on November one, two thousand six as a water plant superintendent with the public utilities department. Barry resigned on February nineteenth, two thousand eighteen and was rehired on November second, two thousand nine as a water plant operator. On November twenty-eighth, two thousand nine, Barry was promoted to chief treatment plant operator at the water treatment plant in the public utilities department where he has served until his retirement. Barry has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro of expressing to Barry their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over these years. Therefore, be resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro that one, we express to Barry our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during Barry's tenure with the city. Two, we offer Barry our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution should be incorporated to the official message of the city of Goldsboro and should be in full force and effect from and this the sixteenth day of July, two thousand eighteen. All for this for adoption.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? All others favor raise right hand. Opposed likewise. Resolution passes. Alright, so now we've got council member comments. We'll start with Mr. Aco.
No comment. No comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, during my tenure on the city council, I've had many opportunities to represent the city and the mayor at various, uh, functions and events. But this past Saturday night was one that, uh, is has, uh, will be unsurpassed, I believe, in, uh, my forthcoming year and a half. That was the Moses family gathering reunion that was held here in Goldsboro at the event center. Uh, the Moses family was started by Alan and Annette Moses. Uh, Alan was born in nineteen, excuse me, in eighteen twenty and Annette around eighteen twenty-five. They had six children, five boys and one girl. They basically came here as slaves, were sold in slavery, basically here in Wayne County. That family has produced, well, let's put it like this. There were five hundred, excuse me, there were two hundred and fifty people there at this event Saturday night. And I have to tell you that I have left dinners after, you know, making opening remarks or left after ribbon cuttings and so forth, but I had no desire to leave this event. I saw some wonderful people gather there, express family traditions, family interactions, share stories, fellowship, and of course, we had good food. And that Kevin, that was that last, so I had to stand up for that. But I will tell you folks, one of the, one of the common themes throughout this evening, Saturday night, was the family. You heard Mr. Sutton tonight talk about the importance of family. In my open, in my remarks, I didn't say too much about welcoming to Goldsboro because the mayor had already written a little welcome, uh, article in this packet here and I, I said I didn't want to, uh, repeat what he had said. So I touched on what we've all talked about here in the last two or three years and that's the family. The family is really, really important and I saw evidence of this Saturday night. We had people there from all up and down the east coast, uh, down in, uh, Georgia, uh, Louisiana. There were people from, uh, Chicago Midwest area, a few even came from the west coast. That was a testament to great planning on the part of that, uh, who put this together and on the interest of these family members who learned through communications before they got here, a lot of them, their history. And they wanted to come here and see some of their kin folks. They wanted to meet them and hear stories about them and so forth. And I'll tell you something, I was just intoxicated with what I saw and heard there tonight. And there were no alcohol there either, by the way. So, um, in my own family, we've been having family reunions for over fifty years and I alluded to that, how important keeping that family, uh, is together. We hear it all the time here in Goldsboro. We, we understand it's part of our issues that we have to deal with. But boy, Saturday night, I saw what keeping families are, what really results in that. I saw kids from, uh, the newspaper stated, I think, the oldest, uh, youngest one was around two years old and the oldest was a hundred and one years old. And there was a couple eighty-sixes and, uh, and so, uh, it was a great, great evening and I appreciate the mayor being out of town so I could go and represent him. I got a lot out of it. And I want to congratulate that family again.
Is that all, Ms. Evans?
Sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Stevens?
I want to talk about, uh, as we always say, diversity, diversity. I wanted to say, uh, thank you to Jay and Amy Bauer for continuing their push to educate, um, African-American culture here in, uh, Goldsboro and Wayne County on the one thirty-fifth, uh, colored troop. Um, they're seeking to try to get a monument for the one thirty-fifth in the downtown area. When they were, we were speaking at the last meeting, council member Aco and I, we were sitting there, we were coming to find out that there were so many Confederate-like monuments, but there's very few Union-like monuments and very few monuments of African-American soldiers in, uh, civil war. And it was just very mind-blowing to know that there were so many African-American soldiers that were a part and beneficial parts to the civil war that helped free other slaves and things of that nature. So it was just like, okay, this is some information that we all need to be a part of. And it's funny that these things are not taught in school anymore because when I was in second grade, everyone knew who Abraham Lincoln was and what he did and how he did it and all these things like that. And then I hear from my children now that they didn't even learn about Abraham Lincoln until like the third or fourth grade. And that's a sad situation for what even the civil war is about. And so I appreciate them for pushing and making that effort to educate so many minds inside of the city of Goldsboro and Wayne County that you have a place, no matter what color, creed, or orientation you are, you are part of this ever-growing experience that we are in this, what we call America society and that we all need to move forward. So I appreciate them and thank them for that. I also wanted to say, there are some things that are not perfect. And when I say that, I say it because I've gone through things. I think every council member on this board has gone through things and even though they are not perfect and they will degrade you or they will talk about you or they will persecute you if you feel that way. Nothing changes by the snap of your fingers. Yes, you have to speak out and yes, you have to make your presence known that, you know, you will not tolerate this. But if you come about it with not anger, but using your mind and your God-given spirit that you have within you to love all men and all God's creatures and move forward with that, then change will happen. So if that's what's going on, these things that are amongst us and we are being, you know, being persecuted in boards or councils or things of that nature, then yeah, they will stop because I hear them, the mayor hears and the council hears these things going on. And they are not being forgotten. So we are very well aware of what's going on. But we will continue to push forward and we will continue to fight with our minds versus our fists and we will make these things better. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Broadway?
No comment, sir.
Councilman Williams?
Yes. It's been a tough couple of months and, um, I just wanted to thank my family and friends. I also want to thank my attorney and, uh, all the people who prayed and the community that held fast and, and were firmly with me through this ordeal. People asked me if I was angry and it's too easy to be angry because nothing gets done when you're angry. So going forward, I am willing to focus with the help of the council. Going forward, I hope to continue to focus my attentions on attainable housing to replace our housing stock. I like to also fight for the activities and programs for our- I like to also fight for the activities and programs for our youth. I hope to continue to fight for a livable wage for all our city employees. I hope to continue to focus on solutions for our cities poor as identified by the UNC Poverty Study. The tactics and distractions cannot replace the truth that we have some of the poorest citizens in the state and that the income disparity continues to grow. We need solutions. Let's get on with that. When we truly work together, not by just words on paper, however truly by our actions, we can accomplish many things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That it?